I'm gonna do that first.
You want me to do local?
No, we're gonna open the meeting and then I'll do.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do our council. We're gonna start the council meeting.
They're gonna, I already talked to them.
Welcome, you know what, why, there's so many of them. Yeah, why don't we do that? If we could just get some chairs over there. And, uh... This is a busy meeting today, we're very excited, we're gonna start it as soon as we get some chairs for our visitors. Welcome from the Ukraine, welcome to Southington, we appreciate you so much. What you're going to hear tonight is a story of incredible courage. And Alexandra Anderson, uh, thank you so much for those chairs. Alexandra, would you have your family sit, please, in those chairs so we, we can at least get some folks uh, from your family seated, we want to honor them and welcome them. Thank you and welcome to the United States and welcome to Southington. Oh, Kristen just came in, okay, good Kristen.
Chris, you need a hand?
Alright. Thank you guys. In the front row ladies, you get the front row. Very good. I wanna welcome everyone tonight and we are about to start our meeting. Thank you for coming out to Monday, August fifteenth Town Council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
William Dietzick. Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Jack Perry.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
I am here. Would you all stand for the prayer and the flag salute, please? I'm not sure how, oh, you do, great, okay Paul, go ahead.
Most heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to ask you for your guidance in your direction as we consider those things that have a direct bearing on the people of Southington. Keep our focus clear and our conscience clean as we seek your help, amen.
Amen. Would you please join me for our flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone, you may be seated. May I have a motion for the minutes of our last meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you Chris.
A second.
I have a second, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just need to abstain.
And one abstention, thank you Val very much, okay. We're going to move right into councilperson's communication. Uh, I'm going to take the lead on that this evening and then subsequently our council will certainly uh, come in and, and give a report. But I want to introduce to you Alexandra Anderson. Alexandra, where are you? Would you come uh, to the podium, please? And Alexandra is a, has come from the Ukraine. How long ago Alexandra?
Eighteen years.
Fifteen years and you need to speak, I'm sorry eighteen? Yeah, good, thank you Alexandra.
Good evening Ms. Triano, eighteen years, yeah.
Very good. And so we've all watched um, in great sadness when we see what's gone on in the Ukraine. And uh, we would like you just to share your heart with us. Explain this very heroic thing that uh, that you did in your life and the fam- and your family's life.
Um, so, thank you so much, dear Town Council members, everybody, thank you for listening to me tonight. It's my honor to speak in front of you and the town, of course. Um, I wrote a brief speech, I hope not to keep it long. Um, but this is a speech that I wrote from the heart, so hopefully you will enjoy it as well. We are extremely welcome. Uh, and extremely, um, we feel extremely happy in this town. And this is mostly thanks to all of you. On February twenty-fourth, our lives have changed in the most horrifying way. Uh, many families in Connecticut have been fully integrated into American communities. Ukrainian community is usually a quiet community, we don't stand out too, too much. Uh, however, we, it was a moment of panic when it was a full force invasion of the Russian Federation into Ukrainian territory. I've been extremely lucky not to ever live through the war physically, but over the past five months I have certainly lived through it emotionally. With my loved ones many times being in grave danger under horrific Russian rockets and blockades. Today after evacuation from east and south, we're completely thrilled to welcome eleven new Southington residents through Uniting for Ukraine program. They are aged from seven to seventy. I wanted to take one minute and ask those who have arrived through the Ukrainian Uniting for Ukraine program as well as their sponsors to please rise. It is hard to truly put into words what goes on in our homes today. We put up a brave face a lot, however, how hard immigration is logistically, how much paperwork is involved, and how hard it is with every step to get small results. But everything will take us to a strong community right here in Southington firmly standing on our own feet. Never mind the Russian aggression or the war. It is hard to think of our men who are left behind resisting a completely merciless enemy of enormous proportions. I certainly feel, I certainly feel like my part in this will not truly be over until the war ends. I know it's true. I cannot join the army, I'm not a paramedic. I'm just a mom who works from home taking her, care of her two daughters, but my commitment to our families is until the very end. I can tell for certain that this war has changed my life forever. And those things that we, I took for granted, that so many of us take for granted, are the most cherished things today. Southington community has given our families a way to get rescues and a new life. And we thank you all in the town so very much. Funding Mariupol Medical Drive for Seniors was an initiative that was supported townwide. We were able to evacuate five and they all lived. The town, including some members of the Town Council, has stayed with me through the story of me getting my mom, my sister and my brother through European barricades, through Slovakia and then Germany to the United States. The town and the folks that live in it helped Mariana, our dear Mariana there find her first job to help get her work authorization cleared. Mariana is moving to her own place in September, it is a victory to us. I wanted to thank the town for funding critical hospital equipment in April to support hospital that received Bucha and Kiev trauma and surgery patients. It has meant a lot to us. Alexandra Midvedovski sends his sincere regrets to you and the town for making this initiative work. It has saved thousands of lives, we cannot be more grateful. I wanted to thank many of you for educating me throughout this path of different points and programs and anything that is available to us for support, it means a lot. I will never forget the medical drive held in the rain and the cold while I was at the embassy in Germany. I cried that night and I'm not ashamed or embarrassed to say it. Thank you for teaching us how to get the results that we need to get our families to safety. We are extremely grateful to the Town Council, to the community, to Southington Community Services Program as well as to the YMCA. I wanted to thank all Southington residents who are and continue to support us despite media not being as strong, not putting as strong of a presence into Ukraine. And we very, very much understand how hard it is with high inflation, with a lot of money to be able to offer a helping hand to us and we will never forget it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. None of us have been in that situation. When Alexandra got a plane, got on a plane and went looking. Uh, right at Socha from September first throughout October tenth. And on September tenth, there's going to be a, um, a large display of artwork and, and a special showing of, of the artwork of the Ukraine people that are here with us and, um... I'm not sure what that's all about. Um, that are with us and in surrounding towns and so you'll hear much more about it, there'll be a lot more information on it. Um, but uh, I just want you to know that if there's uh, anything that you need Alexandra, you know that we as a community are here for you and your family. I understand your home is quite active right now, there's quite a few people living with you right now. But uh, small steps, successful steps, we just wanna be your family's friends and neighbors and we just wanna just officially welcome you to Southington. God bless you and let us know what you need, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you everyone. We have a lot on our agenda, I, right now I'm going to uh, also announce something quite wonderful. And um, let me just uh, pull it up, I have it right here. Um, council members, we've been challenged to take part. Uh, Kristen Ritchie has, has contacted both sides uh, of, uh, both sides that sit here inviting us to partake and be a part of Thursday, October thirteenth at Mary R. Queen Church from one-thirty to six-thirty. There is a blood drive. And Kristen, could you come up and just give us all the specifics, thank you. And uh, we, we were asked just to be there at different times during the day if we could just show up and kind of support it. Um, and of course if, if you roll up your sleeves, there's an extra attaboy for you, so anyway, Kristen, please.
Thank you to the Town Council for this opportunity to invite our community to come together for the first Southington Circulates Kindness Blood Drive. Blood donations save lives in trauma situations, enable people to live full lives who suffer from various blood disorders and other diagnoses, contribute toward cancer treatments and so much more. I received infusions of blood products for two years in order to achieve a successful pregnancy after many losses. I'm sponsoring this blood drive since I want to give back more than I can as just one individual. I know our community is full of kindness and generosity, this is our opportunity to showcase that and save lives. The drive will be Thursday, October thirteenth at Mary R. Queen Church, which is right across from Back Nine, from one-thirty to six-thirty. You can sign up on the Red Cross website or app with the keyword Southington or use the direct link provided via many social media groups I'll be posting in the next few days. I'll also have flyers, um, I'll leave outside the door tonight if you wanna grab one. Many local businesses have already come together and donated various gift cards and gifts that will be raffled off to donors and volunteers. The event will also be a great opportunity to meet others in the community, including some of our very own Town Council members. Thank you all for your participation. My name is Kristen Ritchie, if you have any questions, you can contact me. You can also let me know if you'd like to volunteer at the event itself, even if you want to just greet people, if you can't donate blood, that's welcome too, the more the merrier. Please invite your family or family member, or your friend or family member and sign up when you can.
Thank you Kristen, that's wonderful, and giving blood saves lives and so we know that, thank you. I hope everybody comes out and signs up for that wonderful event. The next thing I have, this is my last thing, but I wanna ask everybody here, did anyone here have a problem on Tuesday's primary, finding their polling place? Did, did somebody have a problem? Well, there were people in Southington that certainly did have a problem, did you have a problem?
I worked.
Oh, you worked the polls? Oh, at Kelly, okay. So, we recog- we recognize that, that fell under the registrar voters office from both sides and so I'm meeting with the two registrars, uh, hopefully this week and we're gonna discuss it. I, it was, uh, it was a very difficult day for some people. Some people went to three different places before they found out where they needed to vote. We cannot have that and we will not have that. And so I just wanna let you know that we are making sure that that does not happen again. And so, um, we will find a solution to make sure that everyone knows where they're supposed to vote. It was, I wanna commend those that didn't give up, but we don't know how many did give up. And so, it is a very serious thing and I'm, I'm sure the whole council feels the same way. So I just wanna assure people on the record, we are going to handle it and I will ensure that our coming up, our very important election in November, that this, this is an issue that will not happen again. So Chris, go ahead.
Just to add on to that, I wanna thank the residents that did reach out to us, we did, the Town Council did receive some emails.
Yes.
Forwarded one.
Yes.
So, thank you to the residents for letting us know because that helps us make better decisions moving forward.
Yes.
And as you said, we'll be addressing that.
We're out, we're going to address it and, uh, I was gonna talk to you Chris a little bit offline and, and, but we are, so uh, and, and also the whole side, yep, Paul?
If it's okay, just to, just to give some backdrop for those who might not be aware of the situation, there was a redistricting in the entire
Right.
uh, state as a, as a result of the, um, state legislature. And as a result, Southington was redistricted and polling stations were changed due to, um, you know, the redistricting and the fact that we consolidated two polling stations, so um, caused a little bit of a, a little bit of a confusion.
Yeah, but we're gonna straighten it out, alright, very good. So now, council members, do you have anything for council matter communication?
Madam Chair, I have something.
Yes, go ahead Mike.
This is brief, I wanna give a, a shout out to the Recreation Department. Um, I have a coworker who lives in Southington and she just started in our office and she absolutely loves going to Music on the Green. Every Thursday morning, she's got a big smile on her face and she's got a ten-year-old daughter and they, it's their bonding time, they go down there, they don't care what style of music it is. She loves going, she loves dancing, she loves watching the people have a great time, so just kudos, it's so wonderful that we're able to have that. The Price is Right, you know, every Wednesday night, it's, the weather's been great, so I just wanted to ju- just give some kudos to the Recreation Department for putting on Music on the Green. It's just a great, a great asset that we have in town.
Thanks Mike, that is.
She loves it, so pass that along.
Anybody else, yeah, uh, go ahead Val.
Thank you Madam Chair, um, so I just, I just, a few, um, just a couple of events that are coming up. Uh, so Saturday, uh, the Early Childhood Collaborative of Southington along with the Southington Police Department is having their childcare seat, um, car seat safety check. And that's gonna be at the Calendar House, um, from eight AM to noon. So that's just really important for, you know, young families with these car seats and trying to maneuver and make sure that, um, that they're safe. And the other event that I, I had heard about, um, there, there's a, they're doing a final performance. It's a, it's Sun- uh, Southington Night Live with CT Improv. And this was an improv series that's called Literacy of Laughter. And they did, they held improv sessions with, uh, the ARC, with Bread for Life, with the Veterans Group. And then they did three public, um, sessions. And I guess they were very, they were done very well and, and really well attended. So this is the final performance, um, it's going to be at Camp Sloper in the amphitheater on Thursday night from six-thirty to eight o'clock. Just, just a couple of events. And, um, just one other thing Madam Chair, you're, we're both involved on the, the public transportation group. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to, uh, to George, uh, Polarek who, um, you know, had a really great, in the Record Journal, um, a great opinion editorial on kind of the, the history of public transportation in Southington. Um, where it's going, what are the issues, what are some of the arguments? And, um, just wanna thank him for really taking the time to do this editorial, get it out there. And the, the group, the public transportation group that I've been a part of and, and the chair has been a part of will continue meeting and, um, there's actually a survey that they've put out and they're coming in and there'll be more surveys going out. So, just a really important issue for our town and, um, you know, just wanted to keep that out in front, so, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay, um, I, Paul had his hand up first Chris, if, if you can, go ahead Paul.
Yeah, I wanted, I had two things I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, our, um, our town staff who was involved in the two, um, repairs at the intersection of Queen Street and uh, Spring Street, most recently, uh, was this morning as well, uh, going back in and permanently fixing what was there. And also to the town residents for being patient with that area. We had a water main break at the intersection of Spring and, and Queen and for, for those who may not know, you know, infrastructure, uh, in town and it's not uncommon for many towns, uh, is sometimes more than a hundred years old, so sometimes these happen and, uh, we do have plans, uh, you know, regularly to update our infrastructure, but sometimes, you know, these, these things occur. Um, great job by, by the staff, Water Department, uh, the PD and, and our vendors, our, our, um, you know, the, those external, uh, team members who were out there working diligently to ensure that they were re- repairing service to the community. And again, thanks for everybody's patience. The last one, I wanted to recognize, uh, councilperson Lombardi and the other council members for, especially Tom, for orchestrating and, and helping to pull together a volunteer effort, uh, a couple weeks ago at the Bread for Life. And, um, I thought it was a, a really great opportunity, heartwarming to, uh, to be in the community, have an opportunity to support Lead for, Bread for Life and, uh, those in need in our community, so thanks to all the council people who attended, I think most everybody here, uh, was there volunteering and thanks to Tom for, for organizing that, really nice job.
Yeah, thank you Tom, yes, Chris?
Just to expand upon that, I also wanna thank Bread for Life, they maintain their summer lunch program at DePaolo all summer long, um, to, to help residents and families in need, so, um, shout out to all the volunteers and Bread for Life for continuing to organize that all summer long.
And for bringing back the Wednesday, uh, the Wednesday, uh, event as well because this was the first one, right? So thank you to them as well, yep?
Um, two, two quick things. Um, first, um, another event coming up, um, many of you may be familiar with, um, the LEAF. Um, Mark Ramsey runs that and there, he's having his annual harvest hoedown. Tickets are now available if anyone's interested, it will be September eleventh. Um, and that's, you can get them on the website, LEAF, L-E-A-F-C-T dot com. So if you're interested, um, you can go right to that website and there are tickets available, there's a button right on the homepage you can purchase tickets for that. It should be a great event.
It's gonna be a great event, I.
And then one other quick thing, uh, we, just to be transparent to all our residents too, we, we passed an ordinance, um, in our parks to make sure that the language was consistent related to marijuana
Yes.
use in recreational areas specific to our town parks. There is still no signage up and I know that was important to communicate that. I actually, I don't know who is in charge, but I have a sample of a sign from another community that I'd like to share with someone that I'd like to see. Move, if we could move forward with that. Um, and this is again, just to make sure all the residents are aware. Um, although, um, marijuana use is legal in the state of Connecticut, we do restrict that. We have an ordinance in town banning the use in our town parks and recreational facilities, so just wanna make sure the signage is available.
That's great, yeah, I thought that had been taken, yeah, it's great.
Mark, send it to you, or Alex.
Send it to me and I'll work with the Public Works.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Great, anybody else? And, yeah, um, yeah, Jack, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I, I attended a couple meetings this past week. One of them was the Persons with Disbuildies Commission. Um, it was a great, I, I couldn't make the last one because of the Barnes Museum had the, the tour for us. Uh, but I attended this one and one of the concerns that I had was that the meeting minutes weren't accurate, uh, for public communications, but it seems like that's going to be addressed. Um, because again, there's a lot of residents that showed up, um, like this evening. I wanna thank everyone for showing up to the council meeting because this is, out of the last seven years of me coming to meetings, I think it's the most I've seen in this room, which is very impactful, so I, I appreciate that. So, um, one of the concerns that again, I, I think we should have a discussion here is, you know, George, um, spoke at that, that meeting as well about the public transportation as well as paratransit. And, you know, I feel that that is a committee that should be giving us recommendations. And what I heard was that they don't wanna talk about public transportation or they don't think it should be addressed unless we address it. Um, I think our subcommittee should be doing the work, talking to our residents and making sure that we're then being brought up to par or whatever the issues may be. Um, us giving a charge, you know, to a subcommittee, I guess that works too, so if that's what we need to do, I would love to have that conversation here because there's some residents that need rides to their doctor's appointments and stuff. So by us bringing some public transportation into our community, it will allow us to get the paratransit in as well, which will help with, uh, doctor's appointments. Another meeting that I attended was, uh, the library, uh, meeting, which again, that was a, this room was full. And I, I think this, you know, hoping we're gonna address it a little bit more, uh, during the library building committee, but again, I, I just, I have lots of concerns with inflation and reducing the size. I was on the planning committee and when we planned it, we came up with the smallest library we could do at the cheapest dollar amount to, to meet our community's needs. A library is not just about books anymore, it's more of a community center. And I learned that, cause when I started going to the info sessions for a new library, I thought books and computers. And I realized that it's more for programming for adults, children, and it breaks down to be, in my opinion, a community center. So, I, I just hope we talk a little bit more about that, just because it's, I think it's a very important issue and it's a hub of our community.
Thank you Jack, yep. Um, anyone else? Go ahead Tom.
Thank you Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to, uh, update the council and the residents of Southington about a very, uh, exciting, uh, part of town that I never knew existed. Um, on Friday, July fifteenth, I got an email, um, inviting me to a disc golf tournament. Uh, it was a regional, it was a, it was a big event. Um, and they were looking to get some Town Council members to go up and, and look at the facility at Panthorn Park. So I sent the last minute email out, um, to the council. Uh, Councilman Del Santo, myself and, uh, Recreation Director Dave LaPray were able to go up there. But I wanna urge all the residents, if you have time, go up to the top of Panthorn Park. I've never been there myself. It is an absolutely beautiful facility for disc golf. Um, this is a sport that's growing. One of the leaders in our commu- Matt from, uh, he's the Assistant Register of Voters. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to the disc golf community in, in Southington and from surrounding states. Um, you know, we talk a lot about economic development and things like that, but this is, this is all volunteer based and they're doing a great thing for Southington. So, um, if you have a chance, go, go check it out. That's it, Madam Chair, thank you.
Very good, anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We're having problems with our, our audio, it's going in and out, not here, not on the tape, but out on the, uh, on our, on our web, so, our livestream, so if you can give us just a couple of seconds, we're gonna try and get it to go. Um, you continue the meeting obviously if you wish, but, uh, I just want you to know that we're having trouble with the volume.
Okay, very good. Did our friends from Ukraine leave? Did they, did, I wanted to make sure that they knew they could leave if they wanted to. Okay, very good. Um, okay, um, you know, if you think we should take a break, I'm, I'm ready to keep going if that's alright with everybody.
Let's keep going.
Is it alright, let's keep going, there's so many people here, I wanna make sure we all get out before sun rises, so. Um, alright, very good, thank you all members of the council, uh, appreciate that. Um, okay, we all set? Uh, let's go to, uh, reports of special committees, the first one we have is Apple Harvest Festival, Tom.
Actually, uh, Councilman Palmeri will report, cause I was unable to attend the July meeting and the August meeting was actually last week, but it was canceled, we got an update from Dave LaPray, so, Councilman Palmeri, please.
Thank you.
Um, so, in our July meeting, um, we chose firework vendors, so we are proud to say we have fireworks display again. Um, it's the first Saturday of the festival, um, Berkshire Fireworks is back doing that. We also, um, talked about our festival ambassadors, so I'd just like to take a minute and thank them. Um, these are high school juniors and seniors that are volunteering their time throughout the summer to help promote the festival. Um, so their names are Elijah Hammond, Sophia LeBlanc, Diego Mendez, Angelina Mikachi, Sophia Shasha, Riley Sima, and Amanda Thompson. So again, thank you to them.
Congratulations.
Um, congratulations. Um, we have, um, sponsorships, we're in great shape, shout out to all the sponsors. Um, paid to date, we have, um, slightly over twenty-nine thousand dollars in sponsorships for the festival, which is great because it keeps, um, it keeps the money in town and we don't need to dip into any operational funds in the town budget because of the- into any operational funds in the town budget because of the fundraising efforts for the festival. And then finally, we're also pleased to report that the festival is pretty much at capacity for this year. There's only one booth available, and other than that, we're at capacity. So there's some new vendors that you'll be seeing at the festival this year, and we are in great shape. We have, we have approximately, when all is said and done, about $96,000 in booth fees that we've collected from all the members interested in coming and being a part of our festival. So.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Getting excited. Great. Okay, anything else on the Apple Harvest Festival?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. Chris, what is the total budget for this year's apple harvest? Do you have that by any chance?
Sure. It is two, a little over $250,000.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes the police, the overtime, the fire, the highway department, everything, the entertainment, the parades, the fireworks, everything. And we try to raise all that money so that it becomes cost neutral or makes a profit for the town.
Right. Especially with the fireworks coming up, that's gonna be great. Item B, sewer report?
Economic strike, you mean?
Yes, I meant economic strike.
So, thank you. We had a meeting.
Madam Chair, excuse me one second.
Yes?
Do you mind if I recuse myself?
Oh, okay. Very good.
Because there was an item on the agenda, just for transparency purposes, there was an item on the agenda at the last economic strike that a family member of mine has. So for transparency purposes, I'm gonna recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have our meeting. There was a chance that we had an opportunity to apply for a steep grant, and unfortunately, the, it never came to fruition. The application didn't pan out. So that was, it was a one item agenda. So there was really, there was no, there was no outcome from it. So, that's it.
Any questions for economic strike? Hearing none, let's move on. Now we have the sewer committee. I know Bill is not here, but Val, do you have a report from that?
Yes, Bill had texted me, so I'll give the report. We just had our meeting last Thursday, and just a couple items to report. The sewer lining rehabilitation work continues. It's moving along really well. Granite Inliner is doing a tremendous job in town. They've done a ton of the re-lining for the sewers. The pump station projects, the Plantsville project is one to two months ahead of schedule, so that should be coming to fruition this fall. The West Queen Street project is lagging just a bit, a little bit of supply chain issues, but those are starting to come around again. And the three pump station project, that's the one that's being funded with the American Rescue Plan funds, that's just getting started.
Very good.
And then we have, the committee took action on the three D manhole inspections. So that's on our agenda tonight. I just want you to know that the sewer committee is in approval, you know, with that recommendation, and town staff is in agreement with that recommendation.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, thank you, Val. One thing that I've read in the Board of Finance minutes, maybe the town manager could talk about it a little bit more, but I thought it was an important thing to point out, was that the sewer, the mandatory connection to public sewers policy was changed, and then the costs, the repair costs are going from $1,000 to $10,000. So from what I've read in the Board of Finance minutes, it's that if you have, if you had a septic tank where there's sewers, you had a minimum of five years to hook up to it, but they're changing that policy a little bit. So maybe the town manager could.
The Chair of the Sewer Committee will bring to you that into September, but I'll touch base on it. Currently, we have a policy that when a sewer goes by your property, whether you have a good septic system or not, you have to tie it within five years. My recommendation was that, that just didn't work. It's not fair, and we've never perfectly blunt, we didn't force it. If someone's sewer system, the septic system was good, we're not going to make them destroy it. So, speaking with the Chair of the Sewer Committee, as well as the member of the Board of Finance who serves on the Sewer Committee, the recommendation was to, was to get rid of that. What'll happen, of course, is when the sewer system, when the septic system fails, and they're able to connect in, and they have to spend more than $10,000, then they'll connect in. So, we feel it's much more equitable for our residents. But that'll, that'll be a change in the ordinance, and it'll be coming through the Sewer Committee recommendation.
Good. Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Let's move on to self-insurance, Tom?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Self-insurance Committee with Councilman Perry and myself met on Wednesday, July 20th. What we did was, we reviewed the fiscal year 2122 budget status, and I wanted to update the council and the residents on the 2122 end-of-year budget. The year ends June 30th, ended the year $1.5 million over budget. And we've been talking about this for a while. Because of COVID, things slowed down, and this was more of a catch-up year. So this was fully expected, and I also wanted to update the council on the last three years, so we can kind of put this one year in perspective. The fiscal year 2018-19 budget ended $740,000 under budget. The fiscal year 1920 ended the year with a $2.4 million under budget. And the fiscal year 2021 ended the year with $3.3 million under budget. So this, this is a, being self-insured, this is part of what happens. There are cycles that go up and down. So, the self-insurance fund is, still carries, even after this $1.5 million over budget, still carries a very healthy reserve in that fund balance. Any questions on the actual results of fiscal year '22 before I continue?
Anyone? Thank you.
Last, next on the agenda, we went through some of the mandates that are effective for July 1st, 2022. We got an update from our health insurance consultant, and we are overall, we meet most of the mandates, and if not, we feel comfortable as to why we are not meeting them. So that was an interesting discussion. And lastly, we had a discussion on the fiscal year '22-23 budget and some of the cuts that were made, and how to appropriately allocate the reduction to both the employees and the taxpayers. And that's a discussion that will continue at our, at our meeting in September. That's all I had, unless Mr. Perry, I may have missed something, or anything else?
No, we just had a discussion about potentially offsetting some of the premiums for some of the town employees.
Right.
Other than that, that was all that we spoke about. But no action was taken on that yet.
Right. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much.
Bless you.
Bless you. Library Building Committee, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Madam Chair, over the last couple of months, the building, the Library Building Committee has been working with the library board and the architect, who has been working on blocking, what they call blocking layout, which is a functional layout of the space that's going to be provided in a new building. As everyone's pretty much aware, we can't build a 30,000 square foot library with the budget that we have. So, I did want to reiterate that the referendum was, the value at the referendum was an estimation of the cost of a 30,000 square foot library three years ago. So, again, that budget is fixed, and as Jack had stated, which was, I think, very correctly, the goal here is to build a functional, flexible, modular library that can sustain programming down the road. It's not really for book storage. Waiting, it's been recommended that we maybe wait to build the library, and the professionals that are involved are saying that there won't be a substantial reduction in the building costs anytime soon, and therefore waiting will only cost us more money to go further, forward in the future. So again, our goal is to provide usable, flexible space to allow for future programming expansion. We are looking at some other options to try to maximize the site. We are also meeting with the State Library Board on the 22nd to, to see if they'll work with us on a reduction of the size, because the grant was based on a square footage size that we obviously cannot build. So our architect is having a meeting with the State Library Board on the 22nd to see if the grant's even feasible at this point. And that's pretty much where we're at. Anybody have any specific questions?
Chris, come on.
Val, myself, and I know you, Vicki, also attended the meeting, along with Jack, this week. Mark, I look to you. I couldn't help but have memories back to serving on the middle, I served on the Middle School Building Committee along with the town manager. And fortunately, many of you may remember, we had to actually go back to referendum a second time. It was a little different circumstance in that case, when the construction began. There was more remediation work specifically with PCBs and asbestos behind the walls. We learned about vapor barriers and everything else more than we needed to know.
We know about PCB issues.
So there was a lot more remediation needed, but unanticipated when the project was approved. So, I couldn't help but think back to what we went through with that, and I'm wondering if we maybe have a conversation, do we do something similar to what we did with that project and go back to referendum for additional funds potentially needed to get the project to where it needs to be, and what the voters ultimately asked for. And we sold them through the marketing that we did leading up to the referendum. So I don't know who really to direct that to, but.
Well, it's a policy decision, obviously, but there's only two ways you can get money into a past referendum. One is to go out to re-referendum, and the other is to actually put the money into, into an active budget, which means, no one's going to want to do that. You can't put $4 million into a, into a budget. You destroy an active budget. So, so the only, the only option, if the, if the policy decision of this board was that, the only option would be a re-referendum.
And I think we really need to think about things. There are a few things, I know, that members of the council and also in the community, we've been open to listen to suggestions. Our hands are tied, because the referendum that we proposed at that time, we thought would be sufficient, but as all of us are experiencing this inflationary, unprecedented inflation, so too our town is as well. And so, I would like very much for us to consider it, think about what we want to do. We can't certainly do it, you know, tonight to do anything thorough. And what breaks my heart in all of it, Chris, is that, you know, we were so close, and we really, you know, we went from 12.5, 12 million five, and then we thought certainly, you know, the 17 would, or 16.9 would be sufficient. But we're hearing that it is not. And so, we will talk more about it, and let's look at things. Also, it'll give us a time, while they're doing their due diligence, a meeting with the state and the architect, it also will give us a time to hear from residents too. I was very happy to be there and listen to what the residents had to say, and, and the only way we can do this thing is together. So, let's take one step at a time. We've got, there's no rush at this point in time. We're going to hear from, back from the Building Committee, and certainly from the state. And at that time, we can really sit down and talk about what we can do.
Just to follow up on that, what is the timeframe, Town Attorney, Town Manager, if we wanted to do something for the referendum?
You'd have, you'd have to get it 60 days before, you'd have to have the question done 60 days before. And the election this year is the November 1st, so 8th, so you'd have to have it by September 8th. There isn't, there isn't going to be enough time for that.
So unfortunately, there may be a little bit of a time. Again, I don't, I'm not suggesting we do anything tonight, but if that is something that we want to pursue, we just need to be aware of that timeframe.
I would really want to know the impact of, and how high we would be looking at, because people are hurting right now with this inflation in their own pocket. And so I want to be very sensitive to that, because whatever we do, of course, has ramifications to the individuals that are paying their taxes and trying to make ends meet in their own homes. So, let me finish. So, so we do need to be very mindful of it. I don't, I don't know if we can make this November. Honestly, Chris, I really can't see a way to do that. But I do want to continue to the conversation and see what we can do together. Okay?
And I think, just a couple of things. I mean, I know you were on the, you said you were on the Middle School Committee. You've had a lot of experience in that space. And of course, I know you even started the library project in your tenure as Chair. And probably, you know, since that time, even the costs continue to go up, right? I also think that we need, we need to let this meeting happen with the state to find out that 1 million, is that 1 million going to continue to be available to the town, or do we need to include that in future discussion? So, in order to have a full picture, to your point, we need to understand whether we have a million from the state or whether we have none, or maybe more.
Vicki?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have a question. So, maybe for Alex or for Mark, I'm not sure. What happens if it goes back to referendum and the referendum fails?
It's only if it fails. It's only for additional money.
For additional funds.
Correct. We have, we have the authority right now for 16.9 million dollars.
Right.
And just, just so everybody, everybody understands, the million dollars from the state does not change the 16.9 million dollars. I know a lot of people confuse that way. It does not. The town can only spend 16.9 million dollars whether it gets money from the state or not.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Jim?
I just want everyone to consider that the reduction in size is between 6,000 and 8,000 square feet. The result will be 22,000 to 24,000 square feet of functional, thoughtfully laid-out space. The meeting for Wednesday was to discuss whether or not the library staff thought they could reduce the collection size by 20 or 30%. So, the architect had floor plans that required a lot of book space. And so, in the last meeting that we had, we asked, is there any way we can maximize the usage space? And the architect said the only way you can do that is reducing the books. They came to that meeting last Wednesday with an alternate plan to say we don't need to reduce the collection size, and we could pick up the extra space. So, the architect that was hired is very professional at library layout and Library of the Future layout. And I'm confident that we'll get a library that's much more functional than we have right now, and one that will be prepared to support us in the years ahead. So, don't get, don't get fooled on the size so much. The budget is, the budget is substantial, and we can deliver a really nice library. We just have to get together and make sure we do it right.
Thank you, Val. Yeah.
Just a couple of questions, because this, it is such an important issue, and, you know, one that I hope that we can all work on together. So as far as the referendum, if we, if we had to do a special referendum, it wouldn't have to be for November, correct? Similar to the golf course?
You'd do a special off, off referendum.
So, that's a, that's a possibility.
Term we don't do in the winter, we do them in the spring. But, yeah.
Or it could be at any, as long as we're 60 days out. Okay. And I guess, Jim, I don't know, if, have they talked about, has the architect talked a little bit about with the library becoming ADA accessible? Are we losing space because of that? I mean, I know the minutes of the meeting when Tappé put their plans together, said you're going to have a 29.9 square, you know, 1,000 square footage, but because you're, it's ADA accessible now, you, you lose some space. Obviously, we want it ADA accessible.
Please, everyone.
And so, they, they had said in the minutes that you would lose maybe, that would, could be, that could be almost 3,000 square feet. So, is, is that similar now? If we're going to be at a 24,000 square foot, but it's ADA accessible, are we kind of getting back to 21,000 square feet?
Well, at this current time, we don't have an actual firm plan, so we're looking at possible floor layouts to give us the square footage. And the design was designed in a way that utilities and the ADA, elevator spaces are combined to reduce the footprint. Some of that ADA requirement is externally, so ramps to come into the building. And again, that's all part of the design. Is there a drop-off area that's, that has, you know, no, no steps or bumps?
Right, but inside, I know we have to have more room between the shelving and things like that.
Yeah, but again, so the, so the, so the Library of the Future, as we see it, is less cumbersome with walls and rooms and hallways. And so, I wouldn't say you lose, I don't know that you would lose specifically in, like in an aisle way for bookcases. So when the architect does the layout of the floor planning, they know what the requirements are for width, and that's just automatically in there.
Right, right. Okay, because I, yeah, I just think that's something, I mean, the size is definitely something that.
The goal is to maximize the usable space.
Right, and make it flexible. Right. And I understand flexible space and usable space. I, I just, you know, 24,000 square feet, just, it just seems small to me for, you know, for the, for a town our size and what we're looking to do. But as I said, I really hope that we can work on this together. We could look to the public for what, what they want to see, and really take that into account, take into account what the architects are saying and the, the professionals.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair?
Yes, okay.
Thank you. So, I echo a lot of the same concerns. Again, I started going to the info sessions probably back in 2017, 2018, probably 2018, and then I had the honor of being on the Planning Committee. And again, we met with architects, we figured out the size that we needed. We ended up coming up with, we needing, our community needing a bigger library than the 29,000. We ended up coming up with, we needing, our community needing a bigger library than the twenty-nine thousand-ish square feet that we recommended. But the price tag was like twenty-two million dollars. We then were pressured to come up with a design for twelve and a half million. We didn't know how to come up with it. Then we were told to come up with a design to do an addition. And I was against that because I'm like, that's like saying, hey, I'm going to build a garage. It's not going to be big enough. And we're going to sell the taxpayers on an idea that's just not going to be appropriate. So again, I have huge concerns by reducing the size because I had knocked on thousands of doors in the last election. And I talked, I was an advocate for the library, obviously. And we sold the town or the community a size of a library with certain amenities. So by us going backwards, yes, I understand that the town approved a dollar amount. But at the same time, that dollar amount was tied to an idea or a design that we promised them. So I don't think cutting it, I know the designs were redone and I get all that, but there's a lot of work done on the planning stage where we spent money to try planning this out. So I feel like the building committee is going back into the planning stage where if that's the case, I think that we need to present to the community a referendum of the idea of what it is, and the voters have the ultimate decision. I'm a strong believer in the voters or the residents deciding certain things. And I don't think that us decreasing the size of the library is what they were anticipating. So I'm totally against on decreasing the size. I understand inflation. I'm directly affected within my own business of inflation. So I just think that, again, it would be doing a disservice to the community. Meeting with the state, we may lose a million dollars. And again, the state had certain guidelines that we talked about on the planning committee level. So the guidelines, we met fairly. So by going, you know, with that size of reduction, I'd bet almost everything I have, we're going to lose a million dollars from the state. So we will then maybe not even be twenty-two to twenty-four thousand. We'll be building a twenty-one thousand square foot library that's ADA compliant, which is great. But at the same time, we now took on bonding that, you know, I'll be paying back and all the residents for many years. And at the end of the day, if my name is anywhere associated with that, I'm going to make sure that I'm voicing what I feel is right. And I think this needs to go back to the residents. Thank you.
Of course, that means, of course, that means, and I appreciate what you're saying, everybody's saying, I want a new library myself. But what it means is that the burden of that will be on the taxpayers. So all I'm saying is, I agree that, that what we need to do is to come up with a usable plan. It's too soon until we hear directly from the architects to see what they can do for us to make that decision. That's why we can't move quickly for November. But we're open, as Val said, let's work together. We want to do what's right for the town, but for the entire town, the best we can do. And, you know, the last thing we need to do is to, to see this as some sort of, it's for the town. And so we have to remember the whole town. And that's one of the things that, that, yes, I want a new library. But when you're dealing with people who have difficulty paying for medication or putting food on their table for their family, who have lost their jobs, or just coming through this recession, that we need to be mindful. We just can't, we just can't wing it. We need to be mindful of all of that. That's all I'm saying. So absolutely. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Just quickly to that, because I just, it just prompted something. So has there been any talk, Jim, about simply pausing the project?
Yes.
Well, and I just, just the point I just want to make, though, because just thinking about what's going on in our economic environment.
Right.
Yes, things have looked bad, but things are starting to look better. I mean, the gas prices were up at over five dollars a gallon. Now they're creeping down to three something. Wages are, have been up, you know, is, I guess what I'm trying to say is if we can pause a little bit and things can start to level out, you know, it's not the doomsday that we're, we don't want it to be. You know, that could be the answer. And then the money that we are, we do have, the sixteen point nine that we have, is going to bring us, get us a larger library.
So we need to really hear from the architect at this point in time and see what they can produce for that. And then we'll discuss it. And in the meantime, we want to hear from the residents. I want to hear, that's why I was there. It was very important that we hear from the residents. And open our, open our ears also to other alternatives that might have come out. There's been some suggestions that I think are extremely valuable right now. And so let's keep our eyes open and our ears open, and we'll just continue. I'd like to move on.
Can I say one more thing, Madam Chair?
Thank you. So again, I echo all the same concerns. And I know when we were doing the budget, I echoed some concerns that, again, with inflation and what the rise in taxes like this year, our spending increased, but our meal rate didn't. I was talking to a resident today, and they were upset. Their car taxes went through the roof. So I agree that we need to watch all of our spending. And I'm also, I've heard some rumors that, you know, some people are recommending some of the money coming out of the reserves of our rainy day fund, which I don't think is the appropriate way of doing this project either, because you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I just, I have some concerns next year, what our meal rate will be and what our taxes will be for all residents based on all the inflation. Because a lot of the town contract is, contracts are just starting to renew. So we have some old pricing with some of our vendors, and we're starting to see some of those new costs. So the Federal Reserve is trying their best to try to slow down inflation, but again, our economy is just, it's, we couldn't plan for this. But same time, I think we need to try planning for the best.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on. Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our meeting on Wednesday, August third. First thing, on the twenty-seventh of August, there's going to be another household hazardous product disposal. It'll happen in Bristol, though, this time. You know, it's on a rotation with us, Burlington, and Bristol. And this one happens to be in Bristol. It's the twenty-seventh of August from nine to one. It's a Saturday. It's at the Public Works Garage on Vincent P. Kelly Road. It's right off of two twenty-nine. The information is on the Southington website. If anyone needs to look that stuff up, they can. And they take paint and oil and all the household hazardous items that the transportation does not take.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
A little bit more, yeah, a few more things. Paving is happening. I know we see around town, there are some disruptions with paving of roads. So everyone just be careful. Make sure we're giving town staff and the others that are paving the roads, give them lots of time and patience because they're, you know, working on the roads. We got an email today from the town manager about a traffic study that's going to be happening for the bridge, for the Route ten and three twenty-two. We touched on that as well. Once that study happens, we'll have lots more information. I know Councilman Perry has some concerns about the bridge, so more to follow on that.
Do we have a date?
Two months.
Thank you.
They said it's going to take about two months.
Yep, two months to get an accurate traffic count, okay? The water department, Mr. Arnt spoke about, it's been very dry. So it's mandatory now that we're doing odd even for watering for your lawns, make sure that we're following that to ensure that we're conserving water. And he did talk about the repairs that were supposed to happen last night. They ran into some issues. I know Councilman Chaplinsky spoke about it earlier. So everything's back to good there. They were able to repair that road, and construction's over. And hopefully, it didn't affect too many businesses on Queen Street. But they ran into problems that just, you know, the infrastructure is so old, you just don't know what they're going to find when they start working. And then lastly, later on tonight, we're going to be talking about the municipal parking lot in Plansville. So more to follow on that. It's a couple of agenda items down.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, any questions for open space?
Public Works, right?
I'm sorry, Public Works. I'm looking at open space next. Public Works.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question. Councilman Del Santo, I got an email from somebody, or actually a text message in regards to some tree removal at Rec Park near the exit. Do you know anything that's going on with that?
Those were slated to come down last year, and we just ran out of time. So they're marked again. The majority of those trees are diseased. And there's becoming a hazard because the branches at the top are falling off. And they're falling down, not only on the grass, but on the parking lot as well. So actually, Councilman Chaplinsky had some questions about it as well because we saw social media post about it. And we're going to put a plan in place, hopefully, to replace some trees. And we're going to reevaluate the amount of trees that are actually going to come down over there. So we'll reevaluate, but the ones that are dangerous do have to come down because they could pose a liability and a hazard.
If I can just comment on that as well, since you mentioned it. So I did have a discussion with the Public Works Director, and there's going to be a pause until they reassess exactly what needs to be done there. Because they were, like you said, originally going to take them all down. When I had done a look myself before contacting the Public Works Director, it had seemed as though there's probably three to five completely dead trees in there. So, I mean, those have to come out. But do they all need to come out? And if they do all need to come out, do they need to come out this year? Because personally, I would like to see a, you know, maybe same concern, Jack. If for some reason they all must come out, I'd like to see a plan to plant, replant, and reestablish that area with something that's going to be equally as nice for the future. Because, you know, this is a significant piece. And I also had asked the town manager and the Public Works Director to look at, you know, what kind of process we could put in place when there is something significant like this that might impact the character of a park or have a significant resource drawn this that gets approved at a board like, you know, the Parks Board. How do we ensure that we get a look at that before it gets done? So I think that that's important, that we also consider that type of a process to ensure that we're all beating to the same drum, there's transparency. Not that there isn't transparency. I know that this was discussed at the park board.
Several park boards.
Yeah, so, you know, how can we beef that up a little bit so that we ensure that we're, there's communication across maybe more than one board?
Madam Chair, I have one more question. So the Route three twenty-two bridge, I got that email. For some reason, I couldn't open up the file from my phone earlier today, so I'm going to have to try from a desktop. So you mentioned that it's a two-month study. Is it going to take them two months? Is it going to delay the project? And again, I thought the study was already done, so are they just doing an updated study?
An updating study, yeah. The, well, we, the complaints that we're met with several people on this board, when the director and I met with him two weeks ago or whatever it was, one of the things we mentioned was that we felt the information was not up to date. So they agreed to do, update the study, which is going to take about two months to do. And also, we spoke with the fact, perfectly blunt, we said, is this an issue just to reduce a bridge? Or is this, and the answer is absolutely not. This was, this was designed not to just get rid of a bridge for liability persons for the state. This was designed with the, with the whole aspect in mind. So we did put forward some of the concerns we heard on the DS here.
My only concern, like I stated several times, is that when I went to the original meeting, the presentation was one, they were doing the design phase, kind of like the library. They realized that they could get away with the bridge, without a bridge. It's like saying, hey, I could build a house without a garage. Of course you can. I don't think adding another light in Southington is going to, you know, make our quality of life the best for our community. So again, I appreciate town staff and everybody staying on the state. Because again, we pay tens of thousands, everyone pays thousands of dollars in taxes to the state. And this is our opportunity with the state to do the project the right way and not the cheapest way for our town. So thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may make a comment, just because I want to make sure that there's, for those who might not be aware of the situation, that the comments are also put in context. First of all, the state did not say that they were doing this, Jack, in fairness. The state did not say they were doing this for it to be the cheapest solution. So let's, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
During their.
The state, the state did provide traffic numbers. There was traffic count numbers that were provided with this. And they had an expert that did come, a traffic engineer that did come and testify that, based on those numbers, it made all the sense in the world to do this. Now, Jack, you did express interest in having those updated because I think they were maybe three years old, just pre-pandemic. So I think that's what they're going through, and I don't think it's impacting the project's schedule because it's not planned to be done, you know, in the next.
Won't impact the schedule because they can't do the schedule until they get completed numbers anyway.
You said you didn't get a chance to read the email that came today, but there were some, there were still some pretty strong opinions from the DOT that were put on the record, such as, there's a quality of life issue on Old Turnpike Road. You know, everybody who's going to six ninety-one, coming from the center of town is using Old Turnpike Road, which is a residential road primarily, and traversing that road to go to six ninety-one. There's a feeling that about forty percent of that traffic, forty to forty-five percent of the traffic, will be alleviated once this gets done. There's also congestion issues on Norton Street, which is that, you know, that left-hand turn that goes down to Merritt and Waterbury Turnpike by the, by the bridge. And we all know that you can't see looking west. When you go to look right, it's a nightmare. And traffic queues up from Old Turnpike Road where Tony's Pizza is. It queues up there, so pulling out is a real hazard. That would be eliminated. That whole path would be eliminated and replaced if this was all redone. So there was some qualifying information in there pre-study. The reason that they're waiting, I think I had heard, is that they're waiting for school to be back in to ensure that we captured the maximum, you know, the appropriate traffic there and that the study wasn't skewed that you were looking for, Jack. So I don't think it's going to impact the schedule. I think we're going to get an accurate look.
There's still, and that'll correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said there's still several years out on the project, so.
So a few months is, I don't think it's going to be an issue. And then we'll get a, we'll get a real picture and decide whether it's something that, you know, we need to have concern with or not.
So, Madam Chair, so again, I went and attended their virtual meeting as well. And I know what I heard, and when they were doing the presentation, they mentioned that they were doing cost analysis and all that. And they mentioned the bridge removal at that point in time. So again, based on memory, that's what I remember. And again, the virtual meeting that they did, the presentation, the traffic study was different than what they originally stated. So they're mentioning different dates as traffic studies, and I have a concern with that. Because one of the things they stated during that virtual meeting was that there's less traffic now than pre-COVID. And I, Southington, I sit at lights every weekend. Southington's got lights everywhere, and there's just so much traffic. So, and then I was talking to a lot of residents in there, and one of them is an architect. And he told me, or stated to me, that the town of Southington should be hiring our own firm to look at the traffic study. Because the original traffic study that Mark's office was given was super complex. And at that point in time, Mr. Shoda stated that he was asking for it to be put in layman's terms so we can understand it. So I still think that, you know, again, whatever they come up with, we need to do our own due diligence as a town because DOT is asking for our opinion. And I just think that we just need to make sure that we're doing what's right for the town. Thank you.
All set, everybody? Okay, we're moving on. Now we're going at the open space.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't take questions right now. We have an opportunity in a little, public communication. Well, I don't know. It depends how long the meeting goes for, but we'll get there, I promise you. Yeah, okay.
We have six more agenda items.
Yeah, we got some more stuff, so. We're moving as fast as we can. We do have a lot of, a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. Open space, excuse me, excuse me, I have to move on the meeting. Open space, please, Paul?
Okay, so we're on open space. Very briefly, we had canceled the last meeting with the open space subcommittee. But I wanted to report out that we are still working on getting the scavenger hunt up and running in the next month. And we have two items that are on our agenda later for us to discuss, which is the repair to the roof of the ceiling and the roof of the barn that's there at the leaf site, and also a Bird Street open space agreement, which we've agreed and will vote on this evening. So the town attorney, I think, will speak on both of those later on. Thank you, Madam Chair. Anything, Chris, any?
Any questions?
You mentioned the hoedown. I think that's it.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. No ques- No questions for open space?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the item five, Town Manager's Report and Communications, please, Mark.
The first item I have is the minutes of the Board of Finance. This was our close of the calendar year. Our fiscal year ended June thirtieth, as you know, so this closed the year. This gives the opportunity for both the Board of Education and the town to carry over funds for expenses that were incurred during last fiscal year but will not be paid for into the following fiscal year. So that's really the crux of the meeting. Let me just go over some of the numbers. Carried over for the two thousand nineteen fiscal year for the Board of Ed, the remaining nine thousand seven hundred thirty-seven. We carried over for fiscal year twenty twenty for the Board of Ed, one million two hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars. And we carried over for the twenty-one fiscal year, one million eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. For the current fiscal year that just closed, we won't know that number until September. And they've already established a carryover fund. It'll be funded when the Board of Ed comes to the Board of Finance and this board in September or October with the numbers. The town of Southington also carried over. The numbers are for the general government, one million nine hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. A massive number for animal control, two thousand nine hundred dollars. And the sewer fund, one million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. The reason I read all of those, Madam Chair, is because it's required to read to you what we're carrying over.
Thank you.
Not to waste anybody's time, but any questions on the Board of Finance?
Anyone? Hearing none, let's move on, Mark.
Okay, the next thing we had was touched.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry about that.
I'm just gonna recuse myself on the Plansville parking lot.
Thank you so much, yeah. We'll give you a chance.
Thank you, Councilman. The next item I had was touched upon by Mr. Del Santo. This, some time ago, you approved the lease for this particular property. This property is the Missile Parking Lot in Plansville. As you know, this was, goes back many years. The town set aside three hundred thousand dollars to do off-street parking, as was promised by probably three councils ago, that when we did the downtown Plansville project, we promised to establish off-street parking, because several of the on-street quote-unquote parking that was not really official parking is being removed. So, in this particular case, the director is recommending Martin Lovero through the EZIQC system for a total amount, including a ten percent contingency of two hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. The director is here, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
The next item comes-
I would just like to make a, if I can, I'd just like to make a clarification. The EZIQ system, for those who may not be aware, is a, is a tool that's used to ensure that we get the lowest possible cost on these. We work together with some local communities through our, through our association, through our CROG, to pool together volumes of work that, that communities do. And what we do is we, we use a third-party agency that helps us put out to bid the main things that we do, like roads, parking lots, roofs, et cetera, put it out to bid every, I think it's every two years. And we get the lowest possible bid, and then we use that for when we have these type of projects that come up, so that we're not doing these, these quotations each and every time.
The next item I have comes through the open space committee. We replaced the roof on one of the barding, barns over at the Leaf Site. But before the roof got replaced, the ceiling was damaged. So that's also going to be requested to be repaired. Once again, we're asking for Millennium Builders of Rocky Hill with a ten percent contingency of fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. This is gonna come out of my townwide roof account, which is a capital account, which you know I fund with X number of thousand dollars every year to make sure that we have money available for town roofs. Having to answer any questions on that. Mr. Chaplinsky's here, and the director's here, if they have any questions.
Anyone have any questions? I hear none.
The next item I have comes from the sewer board. An exciting thing here, we're, we'd like to hire Duke's Root Control so that we can go through the manholes and the pipes to make sure that the roots that are collecting in there were removed. It went out to bid, there were three bids. One was two hundred and eighteen dollars per manhole, one was a hundred and fifty dollars per manhole, and Duke's Root Control was one hundred and forty-five dollars per manhole. So the sewer committee and the sewer superintendent is recommending Duke's. The total amount is forty-one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, and it'll be used, the sewer maintenance fund will be used for that purpose. Any questions?
Anyone?
Madam Chair, I do not need an executive session tonight, so it'll be a straight meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the town manager? Hearing none, let's move on. Our town attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item I have is school access sidewalks. As you may recall, this, I believe, starred the last town council where residents were concerned with the cost and maintenance of school access sidewalks, which the town of Southington pays to maintain the actual concrete in the sidewalks, as well as pays to shovel, snow blow, sand, and salt those. The Public Works Department and the town council asked the Board of Ed to go back, do an audit, reassess what sidewalks are needed for the students, what sidewalks may no longer be needed. That was done on Mr. Romano on April 12th of this year, sent a memo to the superintendent outlining two areas where he believed are, the sidewalks are no longer needed. One is a section of Old Turn, Mulberry Street from Old Turnpike Road to House 263. The other one is Parkview Drive, it's a dead-end road, and it, according to him, should never have been on the list at all. The Board of Ed voted to send a favorable recommendation to remove these two sections off of the town-supported school sidewalk lists. One issue is, they, if you do vote to send them back to the prop- and give the responsibility to the property owners who, who abut those sidewalks, the town's recommending that they are brought up and fixed, so they're in really, really good shape. There's an outline of the costs analysis on that in your packets. The one thing I will highlight to you is, it also will take away snow and ice liability from the town. Right now, the town is on the hook if someone slips and falls due to negligence and clearing the snow. This will remove one point three one miles of liability to the town and shift that back on the homeowners to make sure that those sidewalks are cleared in the event of snow and ice. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions on that?
Just, just to add, Madam Chair, it would be approximately forty, seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which I would take out of the five hundred thousand dollar sidewalk account.
Very good, thank you.
And the Director of Public Works is here, if there's any questions regarding the repair.
Yeah, anyone? Okay.
I just want to thank the Board of Ed and the, all, all the parties involved in researching this. This is an issue that takes a lot of work to research, and I think it should be researched not just once every five or 10 years, but it should really be reviewed every year. And for the public's knowledge, you know, we're not doing this to save money or to, just because we think it's the right, we, we're doing this because there's not kids walking to school on these roads. So why should these roads be paid or plowed by taxpayer money? So it's the appropriate thing to do. It's not going to be the popular thing to do for the residents on these streets, but we hope that they, people understand that this is a fair policy for all the taxpayers of the town and for the safety of the children, so. That's all, thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have a timeline, Alex? Are they gonna start repairing the sidewalks immediately? Or is this for this winter, next winter? I just wasn't sure. Director? Sorry, Nat.
See, it was worth coming out.
Depending on, you know, how the vote goes, when I would get the go-ahead, we have a sidewalk contractor who we have on board, so, you know, he could start this fall. I'm not sure if he could complete all of it before this winter, but, you know, once I get the word, then I can get back to you with a better timeline.
Very good, thank you, Nat. Chris?
Just an additional point. Because these, this is gonna be making a personal impact on these homeowners in those areas. I really think, we've talked about this many times here, you brought it up tonight with the change in voter registration. I think a personal communication needs to be sent to each homeowner.
I agree.
Not just a generic publication, but a personal notification to the homeowner so that they realize-
They would understand that we, that is, the elements of the whole issue.
Absolutely. So we just want to make sure, make certain and add that to the minutes.
We believe we did that when we did Mulberry Street, so. Director's still here, so the director will do the same thing we did for Mulberry Street.
Farosh Street.
I'm sorry, on Farosh Street, we're doing it for Mulberry Street, we did for Farosh Street, so we'll do the same thing.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Good catch. Thanks, Nat, very good.
If there's no other questions, my second item is the charter revision question. As you will call, you voted to open the charter and approved a report. The second part of the preparation to go on referendum is, you also need to approve the actual question that will be on the ballot. I've worked with Clerk Larkin, we've developed the language, and that is in your packets for approval or discussion tonight. And the third item is the 824 proposed open space. As Councilman Chaplinsky alluded to, there's a, there's a contract on your packet where I want to thank Attorney Bedard putting this together, and the property owners who have agreed to sell the town some valuable open space. As, before you approve it officially, it has to go to planning and zoning for them to give the sign-off per state statute. And if they give a favorable recommendation, it'll come back to the town council for final action. And that concludes, Madam Chairman.
Because our next item would be public communication, I think some of the, we don't engage in conversation usually with public communication, we listen. However, Attorney Rick Adon, I would like you just to give an update, if you could, for the Fair Rent Commission, because I think some folks have some questions about it here, and we will not be able to engage. So could you get us up to date on that, please?
Absolutely. So, this past legislative session, the state of Connecticut, and then the governor signed into law a new mandate for all towns that have twenty-five thousand people or more to establish a fair rent commission by no later than July 1st, 2023. That's really all they said. There's no charging order, there's not a lot of guidance in the law. What the law states is that the commission should study, have hearings, and receive complaints. And the purpose on the commission is to eliminate excessive rent charges. Point blank, I don't know how that's going to work. The law doesn't provide any actual teeth or authority to a commission. It also doesn't provide the size of the commission. So I spoke with the chairwoman, I briefed her, and I've given her some of my thoughts on the size of the commission, the people who possibly should be serving on the commission. And we've had a lot of discussion back and forth on how to make the commission as the best commission possible for the town of Southington for what our needs are. We've looked at several other towns, we've had this in place, most notably Newington. And we're, we're looking at some of their provisions and gonna circulate them with the council so they can-
Full council.
The full council, so for full transparency purposes. We're in the very, very preliminary stages. What I am asking for is the state for more guidance. If they're gonna publish, they're going to publish more guidance as far as how they interpret the new law, what the town's authorities will actually be. A lot of people have asked me, well, can we just utilitarian destroy someone's contract and say, we're not, you raised rent five hundred dollars, we're making that go away? I don't believe that would be legal under the US Constitution, but I don't know what the state of Connecticut is going to say. So we're really waiting for more guidance from them. And again, we have till July 1st, 2023. I don't know the size of the commission, I don't know if there's anybody that's required to be on it. I would, I would, I think the chairwoman actually said she wants renters to be on there, to have everybody to be on there.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll all discuss it, that was just my, my gut on that. But once we get all this, everything we can from the state, then we can start to really choose a commission that would fit Southington's needs, and we'll all be involved.
Madam Chair?
Yes, do you have a question for the attorney?
Yes. So, I guess, is it your opinion that we maybe start with some sort of commission? Because based on what you're stating, that the state is saying is that they pretty much want us to start listening to our residents first. And then mentioning the size of the town makes sense, because again, Southington is a big town. So I think, again, if we even start a commission now, so we could start listening to our residents, may be the right step in the right direction, excuse me. And as the state gives more guidance, we can then add more people to the commission. That would be my recommendation.
That's exactly what we're doing, I'm glad we agree, Jack, thank you. Okay, let's move on. This is public communication, and we're here to listen to your concerns. We are, we promise we're going to be respectful, we would ask of you the same thing. So when you come to the microphone, you'll have five minutes. Please give your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Kenneth D. DeLorey, 43 Riverside Drive. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council. Thank you for your service and commitment to Southington and for the opportunity to speak. As you remember, last month, myself and all the residents submitted a petition to the council for creation of a fair rent permission, fair rent commission per Connecticut statute 22-30. Residents of Southington Sun are now part of a nationwide trend wherein real estate investment trusts and other institutional lenders are purchasing mobile home parks and other types of rental properties and driving up rents in markets across the country. As you can see from the turnout here tonight, residents are very concerned about future rent increases from our out-of-state corporate landlords. And we are looking to the town to create a neutral arbiter to turn, to turn to if future rent increases become so excessive, and that's the legal standard. Mr.?
Rick Adon.
Rick Adon. That's the legal standard that's in the statute. If, if rent increases become so excessive as to be harsh and inconspicuous, and of course, a resident would then have to prove that before the fair rent commission. Finally, we're looking for the council to make this a front-burner issue, as many of our residents will begin receiving rent change, rent change notices for 2023 as early as November or December. So, I, you know, our residents here tonight are looking for you to create whatever study committee that you need to enact to get this moving. For your, for your, there are, for the record, there are twenty-four towns in Connecticut of all stripes that have fair rent commissions now. They are all a little different, I understand the issue about not enough guidance from the state. However, there is a model fair rent statute. I was hoping to have it for you tonight. It's on a draft form, but it is, I would say within a week I can get it to you. And it will have, I don't know, I don't, the organization's doing it. I don't know if CCM is on board or not, but it's coming.
Would you please make sure that we get a copy of that?
Absolutely, can I email it to you?
You can.
Could you just email it to my office?
Okay.
And then I'll send it out to everybody.
All right, I, as soon as I have it, and I don't, again, you can't hold me to it, but I've seen it. It's, it's, it's out there. I don't know what they're waiting for, I've been hearing this ready, ready for a couple, three weeks now. That's all I have. Again, several other municipalities are out there that have. You mentioned Newington, Weathersfield, Glassland Berry, the bigger cities. The rural towns like Colchester, Clinton, they all, they all have fair rent commissions for sometimes as many, as long as thirty years. Also, I'm a, I'm a member of the Connecticut DCP Mobile Manufactured Home Advisory Council, and I'm the president of the Connecticut Homeowners, Manufactured Homeowners Alliance. I have access to information that, you know, may help you if you need it. And I'd be happy to try to help in your deliberations on this issue. But we really need you to get moving on it, because our residents, as you can tell, are, you know, the natives are restless.
We don't want to get them restless.
If you have any, any questions I can answer, now I'll try. Otherwise, I want to get home and watch my baseball game.
The Mets, the Mets.
You haven't been able to root for the Mets in a long time.
Better than the Red Sox this year.
Thank you very much, and please make sure, we have his address, we have his, his information, right?
He's been emailed.
And he's been, oh, wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay, well, I think we have a couple other residents.
I'm sure we do.
Councilman Marley, thank you for doing a super job, and I appreciate all the efforts that you have put into this. All the schooling that you've gone through. And believe me, and I know all the flak you've taken.
George, you need the mic, they want, they can't hear you, you need the mic.
All the efforts that you've put in, and maybe all the flak you've taken from me, too. The library. You know, with all the schooling I've had and everything else, there's one thing that sticks in my mind more than anything else. God gave me an intellect, a will, and a conscience. He gave me the right to choose. But with all that, the most important thing that I have to live by is to know the difference between right and wrong. And always have to be able to sit back and determine what's the right thing to do. I think it's clear tonight, that it's been laid out, that there's a lot of choices that goes on with this library. A lot of tough choices that are gonna have to be made. I can't comment any further on this. I know a lot of people have been involved in this, there's a lot of motions and a lot of hard-fact feelings about this as well, too. Good luck, that's all I can say to you. It's gonna have to be well-thought-out. And with the thought going in mind, haste makes waste. And what do we want to do that's best for the future of this town as well, too? Next thing I had was the surpluses that have come in. In history, they've all gone to the rainy day fund of this town. I hope that that's the case as well, too, this year. I say this because of what's gonna be needed in the year 2023, 24 coming up. The budget for the BOE, for the Board of Education, has gotta be met. You know, look at the surplus they had for last year, a million dollars, and they're crying. They're crying, as always. Think hard on those guys down there. Please, please, please. The taxpayers are always getting hit hard by them. The next thing I have is that I'm questioning about, there's two things that go hand in hand together. The softball field for the girls' high school. I drive past there every day. How did that come about? And along with that, something I mentioned at the last meeting, was the redo of the football field at the high school. football field at the high school. Now, I understand there's about at least $15 million involved for those two things. Is that going to be going to referendum? And I understand also that the girls' high school field was gonna be part of that. And if so, why did we spend any money on that yet? And the last thing I have for tonight is that there were no future expenses that we're supposed to be involved with for the, or for the football field. John Fontana, one of my dearest friends, who had no involvement with the football really, other than for his grandfather, and for the, helping out with the football patrons, worked hard to finance that field. I was involved with him with baseball for years and years and years. The town never had to spend $1 on baseball. The lights, the field, everything on baseball was paid for by the boosters. I stood out in December on cold Saturdays and Sundays putting those lights up. Musto came to help us install them. The ballplayers had to rake that field after every practice. I'll tell you right now, baseball never spent, called for the town for any money at all during John's years. And now it's a shame that he had to be the one, a baseball man, to go out and raise the money. John's dead now, and I'll tell you this, John was the most true Christian man I ever knew in this town, along with Jimmy Sutcliffe.
George, I don't know if you heard, the bell went off.
Okay.
But you have your five minutes.
The rest of these people, thanks.
Thank you very much.
You know, with the library and everything else, try hard, think hard, and think with your heart, think with your mind, think of what the guy upstairs wants you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Hi. I'm Margaret Bobman, 20, Pine Grove, Southington. I'm gonna keep it short. I just wanted to stop and say thank you to every single one of you. I can't imagine having to do your job in front of a group like this, so thank you very much. And I also want to add to, Kevin? You go by Dave at home, so, we call him David, but officially Kevin. I just want to add to his plea that we make this a front-burner issue. This is an important thing. A lot of people who are in fact fixed incomes can't afford big increases. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'm Diane Schutz. I live on Pond Mill Road in Plansville, over 45 years. I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider opening the town library on Saturday in the summer. I have thought about this for years. I realize that the reason you haven't had it open is either tradition to save money or to save money. Yes, you would probably need to hire a couple of part-time employees and to turn the lights on. As far as the air conditioning, that has to be on anyway because of the books. As for tradition goes, I know that in 1950, there was usually a parent home during the summer with the children, and they were able to go to the library, they didn't need it open. It is not 1950 anymore. And I spent about 10 minutes of research and found to look at libraries, and this is what I found. Cheshire is open on Saturday, Wilkett Library is open on Saturday, Wallingford Library is open on Saturday, the New Britain Library is open on Saturday, the Plainville Library isn't, just to be fair. Most of the ones open on Saturday are on reduced hours, but at least they have made the libraries available to the people who work and the children on the weekend. It is so important to foster a love of reading in children, and should be year-round, not just during the school year. I very much appreciate fiscal conservatism and know the importance of fire and police and hope to never use them, and I do appreciate my street being plowed in the winter. The quality of life in a town should also be important. There are two places in this town, besides music on the green, that you can enjoy for free, the parks and the library. The reason I'm finally standing up here tonight is that this summer has been very hot. I don't think more than half the residents in Southington have central air conditioning. I know I don't. So, the town, and rightfully so, has designated four cooling locations, the police station, the Y, the calendar house, and the library. Only the police station and the Y are open on Saturday. Both, I assume, have limited seating. Since the weather pattern, if predictions are correct, will continue in the coming year, at the very least, the library, which has a lot of seating and also has games for the children and computers, should be at open at least from 11:00 to 3:30, 12:00 to 4:00 during the heat of the day. Please consider my proposal. Of all the people I have mentioned this to, which is considerable, I have yet to find one person that doesn't agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Alicia Novy, 41 Hill Street in Southington. I just want to make a few quick remarks on the charter revisions that are being proposed tonight. And pretty much, they boil down to two points. In 284.4, you're defining the powers of the library board, and 284.5, you're removing supervision of the library and museum director. She does have two titles, from the library board and granting it to the town manager. But, the wording of the revision question purposely obscures the real intent, which is to place the library and museum director under the town manager. It's not written to inform, but to confuse. It's cumbersome and lengthy. Most people won't read the whole thing, and if they do, they will have difficulty understanding the message. Also, from a legal standpoint, you normally will define the term prior to its use. The wording, you use the term library director in section 284.4, but you don't define the term until section 284.5, which today, I've been writing a few things, and I always define my terms prior to usage. So, it's, it's a little bit of bad form, and I would suggest that you make the change to the library director, sorry, library and museum director in 284.4 instead of 24.5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Loretta Giddix. I live at 34 Red Oak Drive in Southington. I'm here about the rent, but I wanted to ask a question, is that okay, about something else? You're talking about the library and building a new library and so forth. Do you know that you have a federal building in town that doesn't have no handicap access?
We do.
The post office?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, I have a son and grandson, both in the military, and those chocolate chip cookie boxes, they're hard to carry up those stairs with a cane. So, I go to Plainville, but just to look at. Anyway, with the rent, I want to thank you first for your time and hopefully, your attention, your kind, and hopefully speedy attention to forming the commission. I heard some of it, but has it been decided how you're going to pick the people on the commission? Have you gotten that far?
We have not. We're still doing the makeup.
No, okay. Okay. Well, New York has had rent control for a very long time, and they're very good at it. So, maybe we could look at what they've done. They've just passed a law to put a cap on rent to modular and mobile homes, and that's what we would like to see. But, with new rents coming in, some people will have their rents given to them in November for next year, and we're looking at a lot, if they do it by the cost of living, which is 9%, that's a lot of money for all these people, a lot of money. So, hopefully, you can do it quickly. If you need help researching some of these other cities or towns, there's a lot of us that will help. If we can give you more information to help you get it done quicker, we'll be glad to do that. So, we're all here, we care, and we vote. Thank you.
Hang on one second, Regina, we're gonna get you, but we, but Paul does have a comment about the post office that-
Excuse me. I didn't get your name, I apologize. Loretta. I had, I did have a previous discussion with the postmaster at the main post office a few times. He has committed to providing handicapped service at the post office. They can't change the steps because it's a federal building and it has something to do with the grandfather clause with federal buildings. But, he did say he was gonna make a parking spot in the back with a sign out front for people who have a need, that they could park in back, and there's gonna be a phone number they can dial and get somebody to come out and help them. So, we're gonna continue to push on that, so.
Thank you, thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Regina. I actually wanted to see if anyone else, you know, wanted to talk, so that way, if they wanted to go, I more than welcome to let you talk first, okay? No? Okay. Just making sure, I figured I'd help you guys out. Regina Colviello, 12 Beecher Street. As a lifelong resident of Southington, I would like to ask for things to change in I don't care what your religion, gender, or politics are, I have seen so many people lose family and friends over the issues. I was brought up to treat people the way you want to be treated. We have to start treating each other better. We need to stop hurting each other. We all hear different opinions on everything, but we have to respect each other. We teach our children to respect people. How are they supposed to do that if the adults of this town don't respect each other? With that being said, all the officials that represent this town need to start showing respect to each other. If you have issues with each other, leave it at the door. Town meetings are about the town, not your personal agendas. Stop arguing with each other and stop representing everyone in this town. The reason I'm saying all this is because it seems like every meeting, this one is actually pretty good, you have issues with each other. In fact, after the last meeting, I was in the parking lot talking to a few of the people, and the next thing I know, we see members of this town council screaming at each other in the parking lot. This should have been left at the door at your executive session. It was so unprofessional. If you can't work together, how are we going to help this town? If we can't live up to our nickname, City of Progress, then maybe we should change it. Thank you.
Kurt Hollis, One Sawmill Lane in Plansville. Came here today to hear what we were gonna talk about with the strike committee. People out there, the strike committee is set up for economic development in your community so that we can enhance the tax base of our community, so that we can lower the taxes or keep your taxes of the elderly low. We brushed over this very fastly by saying there were no applicants that were acceptable. I happened to be at that strike committee. Unanimously, there was one that was presented that was accepted, but yet, we brushed it by, for political reasons is my guess. So, we brushed by a potential project that the state of Connecticut may have given $500,000 to develop property in the state of, in the town of Southington, which had the potential of bringing a humendous, tremendous amount of tax revenue to this town so that your taxes don't go up next year because you offset increases in taxes by increasing development in the industrial, your commercial. Those are the people paying the large portion of your taxes. We brushed right over it, strike committee, no, no, no possible person. Unanimously, it was accepted in the strike committee. How could you sit there and say, there's nothing going on, when everybody there voted to present it? If you wanted to shoot it down here, then you could have shot it down. But, for political reasons, this was shot down because the individuals that have the majority here didn't want to see it go through because of who the owner was. Plain and simple. There is no, your economic developer has spent years with me. It's me who applied for, years trying to find a site to bring these people in, to invest in your community, to raise your taxes. This would have reduced all traffic flow on Curtis Street to that property. It will eventually get developed, but there would have been no traffic. It would have gone straight through Lazy Lane, we hoped, connected to Curtis Street, eliminating traffic to Curtis Street, that people didn't want, and increasing a massive amount of taxes to you. I'm just very disappointed that we spent no time talking about it, none, none. We blew by it ridiculous, that we could blow by something so important as economic development, when all these people come, because their rates went up $25. Can you imagine the amount of taxes that are gonna go up to? Here is something that's set up by the state to build your tax base, and these people say there's none. You could have denied it at least, but don't tell me there was none. That's an insult to me, that there was none. When we sat in there and you told me, and everyone said, yes, yes, this sounds like a great idea, and you come out here in front of the public, and you say there was no viable. Was there a viable? Yes, there was a viable. Disgraceful that we could say there wasn't. Lady just said, political reasons on why we do things. It's, it's, it's unfavorable. That's all I have to say, is that you people, when you go vote, understand who you're voting for. It's not D or an R. Vote for a person that has integrity, not just, hey, he's got a D next to his name, he's got an R next to it, he's no good because he's a Democrat, he's no good because he's a Republican. There's great Republicans, there's state, just have, have, have self, self need. I just hope that you guys all go out there and vote next election, and you pick not an R, not a D, but people that, that, that care about your future, your future, because it's your grandkids, your kids, that are gonna pay high taxes. Inflation is through the roof, you're gonna see meal rates climb and stuff like that, and that's what this was set up, was to bring tax dollars to your community so that you don't have an increase in your, not only will your rent go up, your taxes are gonna go up, too. Thank you.
Katie Wade, 39, Madeline Lane. At, at the July 11th meeting, the council voted to award trash removal contracts. Before the vote took place, Chairperson Triano asked if there was any discussion, and Councilman Perry shared his view that the scope of these contracts could be changed, resulting in a savings of over $35,000 for our town. As both he and later Councilperson Lombardi noted, this is Mr. Perry's area of expertise. He made a motion not to reject these contracts, but simply to table the vote and have further discussion. I understand from the council's reactions that you prefer more granular discussions to take place outside of council meetings, which tabling the vote would have allowed. Councilperson Morelli said that concerns should be raised before things come to the council for a vote. Sorry. And that he didn't think the council should be debating it during the meeting. This is perhaps the norm you follow, but it's certainly not a rule that I could find. And again, this was an effort to save the town tens of thousands of dollars. Mr. Morelli also said that this wasn't the time to discuss it because the council is here to do a job for the town, which undoubtedly you are, but that seems untethered from his previous comments. When presented with new and pertinent information, taking the time to have a discussion that could potentially save taxpayer money is part of the job, even if the discussion is outside your preferred channels, even if you don't like how the information is presented. As a taxpayer, I just expect due diligence to be taken before town money is spent. Perhaps $35,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, but considering this council recently voted to cut $500,000 from our school's level service budget, I find it infuriating, as did other parents. I've spoken here before about the things our school budget does not- I've spoken here before about the things our school budget does not cover. Books, bookshelves, property maintenance, et cetera. Today I purchased items for Suddington classrooms off of Amazon wish lists that teachers have set up. Parents in this town are now having conversations about whether there are rules that would prevent us from fundraising for staff positions at our children's schools. Because part of what Suddington students lost in that cut was over a dozen para educator positions. This has an impact on our children's classrooms. Do you know what Suddington pays para educators? I checked the contract and they start at $18.36 per hour. So if they work a full day, $35,000 would cover almost three positions for the school year. I'd like to remind the majority party on this council that you're in a strong position. You give away nothing when you take the time to listen, but it can cost Suddington when you choose not to. So thank you for the time you devote to this town and thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you, my name is Nathan Wright, I'm at 1070 Marion Avenue in Plansville. I just wanted to reiterate some of the comments that I made at the library board committee meeting a couple days ago. And again, like I'm, you know, I'm certainly not an expert on library issues or construction issues and the extent of the research that I did probably consisted of talking to a lot of people, walking around town and reading the rather well-done PowerPoint presentation that was on the library board website along with a video accompaniment of it. And my sort of memory of what I read and what I learned and what led me to vote yes on the referendum was that there was a recognition of a lot of things in our town. The ADA compliance being one of them, the, you know, the quality of the construction and the sinkhole and the pictures and news articles from whenever it was built talking about that sinkhole. But more than all of that was the acknowledgement that libraries have changed and we need more spaces, we need more gathering spaces. We need places where, I remember reading about like quiet little areas where people could work together or larger areas where people could like frolic together or play games together. Maybe that's just what I pictured in my mind when I was reading it. But I was just kept seeing like different sized spaces, like different purpose spaces. But that was only, that was only part of what I remember reading there. I remember reading that there was a study done about the circulation and how we were, we were having a lot of visitors to our library from the town of Suddington, but virtually no one from any other town, which was very different from the way some of our surrounding towns were seeing, seeing guests come in. And the idea was kinda put out there, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we had a library that drew people in, that had people come, visit our town, go to our businesses, like eat at our restaurants, you know, shop at our stores, but come to Suddington? And there was a third piece that I remember from that where it was talking about the size of our collection and how the size of our collection on a per capita basis was significantly smaller, if not like one of the smallest in the state, and how we really needed more space to have a larger, you know, to have a larger collection. So that's, you know, so I read all of that, I, you know, I filed it in the back of my head. I thought myself about why it is that I choose to go to the Chester Library and it's partly because it's open Saturdays and that's when I'm free, you know, that's when I'm free and able to take my kids to the library. It's partly because of the spaces and the way that my kids are able to go out and play and it's partly because of just the, especially in the children's section, the sheer volumes of books and knowing that my kids can just go to any bookshelf and grab a handful of books and be happy with them at least for two or three days until we have to go back. And so I was, you know, I was surprised like when I came to that meeting and saw that there was a strong memory about the spaces, but it seemed to not be a strong memory about the size of our collection and how the size that we have now isn't currently meeting like our needs. And how, at least at the time that proposal was developed, there was a real thought behind, what is the size of a library that we are gonna need for the future? Not what is the size we need right now, but how do we prevent ourselves from 30 or 40 or 50 years from now, you know, not looking at like, wow, we really missed that opportunity there? I enjoyed the presentation from the architects, I think they did a phenomenal job. I think in terms of making a building aesthetically pleasing that people will be proud of and happy and potentially draw people into Suddington, I think they nailed it right out of the park. But the two presentations for me were asking us and they were asking the library board to make a choice right then and there of decreasing, you know, decreasing the number of books we have and providing the gathering spaces or cutting back on some of the gathering spaces and keeping the size of collection, let alone like leaving space to increase the collection. And that, you know, that to me is, that's a big choice. Like that's impacting like how that library is gonna be used for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And that's why I really think that, you know, this is something that's big. This is something that we could go back and ask people for. You know, at the very least, we wanna know, like, where does the town stand? Do we wanna have more space for gathering? Do we wanna have more space for books? Do we wanna have both? And if it's both, are we willing to put our, you know, put our money behind that? So I am, you know, I am in favor and I hope that we will have more public hearings to talk about what those two very different directions would look like. I do think that the idea of having a referendum, if we decide that we wanna go with both, I think we could do that referendum, I think it could be off-cycle, we've had off-cycle referendums before. And I just encourage everyone, again, like the wise gentleman said before me, to really think about it and to really think about what's right for the town and to listen to the town before you make the decision. Thank you very much and thank you all.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Last call, anyone else wishing to speak? We're gonna close public communication, thank you all for your comments and we learn as we go. So we appreciate them all. Okay, so let's move on to old business action, item A. Action on the report of the Board of Finance. We're gonna just take a minute 'cause folks are leaving, so we wanna be able to hear everybody. Let's just wait one minute, council. All right, I think we're okay. Let's try again, action on item A, Report of the Board of Finance.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll for the report, please.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Japlinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item B, action...
Gonna recuse myself, Madam Chair.
Oh. Hell it is, it's exercise, you know, you just walk down, we come back. Item B, action on the Plansville parking lot.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have, any discussion on the Plansville parking lot? Jack?
Madam Chair, so again, I'm gonna be voting no this evening on this just for the simple fact that, again, I'm not in favor of the lease that our town signed. It's only a 20-year lease and we're looking at our town library right now, which is over 50 years old. So in 20 years from now, we're not gonna have a parking lot. So we're gonna go backwards in time and, you know, there's a councilperson that's gonna have reserved parking spaces in this parking spot, in this parking lot. And I just, again, just for transparency purposes, I just don't think it's in the best interest of the town.
Okay, very good. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, Tom?
Well, I understand Mr. Perry's concerns. I think that this vote is independent of his concerns because we previously approved the lease for this facility. Now we're just saying, okay, now that we have a lease in place, we need to fix it and bring it up to standards. I think if you're gonna make a no vote on this, you could raise the issue of maybe not using the EZ IQ system and maybe going out to traditional bid. We've heard that argument before. But I think Mr. Perry, I think we, as a council, once we have assets in our possession as town leaders, we have to make decisions on whether we wanna upgrade or just leave it a dirt lot. And I think in this instance, we have no choice but to bring the parking down there and bring it up to standard. We've heard for years and years that there's not a lot of parking in Suddington or in Plansville down there. And unfortunately, it's an expensive solution to the problem. So I'll be voting in favor of it, although it is a hefty price tag. But hopefully this helps the downtown area for the future.
And Madam Chair?
Plansville downtown area, I should say.
It is disingenuous to mention one person who recuses themselves, Jack. So if you're gonna start, if we're gonna use politics and start calling council members out who may have a conflict with this, let's be fair about it. Because there's one person who is not here and one person recusing themselves. I think it's completely inappropriate to use the dais to call out and claim politics when you have no evidence of that. It's not fair.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to go off that. So again, so what's happening here, and again, I tried thinking long-term and what's best for our community. So now you're gonna have a parking lot that is gonna be deeded to a certain individual at the end. And now all the real estate, again, parking is needed down there. And without parking, your property's kind of valueless. So again, I think this is setting up that, again, the real estate, if you don't own a parking lot down there and in 20 years, you won't have access to a parking lot. And in the first 20 years, there's seven spaces that are allocated, which I believe is about 20%. So again, if we're gonna do what's best for the town, I think that there should've been cost sharing on this as well. So again, I'm not gonna beat this, but we talked lengthy about this lease that we entered and I had a concern about the price then and that's why I'm voting no tonight, thank you.
My comment, Madam Chair, if I may, my comment is not that somebody's involved. What I'm suggesting to Mr. Perry is if he's gonna mention one councilperson who has a conflict, he should mention the other. I don't think you should play politics in this. There are two people who have, who are involved in this. One is indirect and one is direct. I just find it disingenuous that you would use the dais to bring that up. And this is not something that, this was something that the town of Suddington approached the two owners on. The town of Suddington made a commitment years ago, before this owner was even involved in that property. We made a commitment to the voters of Suddington, the residents of Suddington and Plansville, that we were gonna bring parking down there. I was just down there yesterday, I almost got killed. I almost got killed in Plansville Center, getting out of my vehicle where, in the middle of town because the traffic is so tight there, we need off-site parking. This is a great opportunity for us to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna just move the motion, I don't think there's any other further discussion on it. Let's just move the motion, would you call the roll, please, Kathy?
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
No.
Perry?
No.
Japlinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item C, action on the leaf barn ceiling repair recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to award the leaf barn roof ceiling repairs to Millennium Builders at a cost not to exceed $14,185.72.
I'll second.
Do you have a second on it, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I think we should call the roll on this also.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Japlinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item D, action on the school access walks. Oh, I'm sorry, I had manhole at item G, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the sewer project to Duke's, is it Route Control? Duke's Route Control at the price of $145, manhole or $41,120, which will come from the sewer maintenance fund.
I'll second that, Madam.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Japlinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Item passes unanimously. Action on item D, the school access walks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the actions as outlined in the memorandum from the Director of Public Works to the Town Manager to turn over the school access walks on Mulberry Street and South End Road or on Parkview Drive, as outlined in the memo.
Very good, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion on this matter?
Just again, to note here during the actual motion, I wanna be clear that homeowners are communicated directly to about the impact that will have on their homes.
And also contingent upon the town obviously bringing the property up to standards.
Absolutely.
Communication by letter, maybe?
Yeah, I would like to see, I would like to see that if we...
Snail mails?
Standard letter, Dan.
We still do letters, right?
Snail mails, can you get a stamp?
Let's move this motion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
We have a second. And would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Japlinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item E, action on the charter revision question. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike, a second?
Second.
Second, Jim, any discussion?
Madam Chair, can I, I just wanted to mention a couple things on this.
Certainly.
So I did, I know Alicia Novi had spoke, did speak about it and I do agree with what she's saying. I'm gonna be a no vote on this, but in looking at the question, just for consistency sake, I do think it's important to have Board of Directors of the Suddington Public Library and Museum and the Suddington Public Library and Museum in both spots.
But you've already declared you're gonna vote against it, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm gonna vote no on it, but I'm just, I know it's gonna, you know, you have the votes to pass it. So, you know, just for clarity purposes for the residents, they should be, it should be clear that it's...
So just to interrupt you, but, sorry to interrupt you, but could we add, I mean, I don't have a problem with adding that, could we add that, legally, can we do that?
I would defer to our town attorney.
So the state statute says you need to approve the question, vote on the question. So if someone wants to amend the question on the fly, you can change it to Suddington Public Library and Museum, without a problem right now. We'll adjust that. And this is a formality, 'cause the state of Connecticut is actually going to be the final approval authority based upon the charter ordinance that was preliminary approved in this question. So this is, you're just sending this to the state, the state's gonna sign off.
Okay, very good. I'd like to have a, was that a motion to amend the...
Do you have a motion on that?
You can make a motion to amend.
Yeah.
I have a question on that first.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Let's have a motion on it.
I have a question on that before we motion.
Well, I just wanted to make a couple other points, but...
Right, let's let her finish.
Yeah, is that okay? Okay. And I do think that, you know, the crux of the charter revision amendment was really about the position of the library and museum director. And the way the question is worded, it's basically defining the role of the library board of directors and the role of the town manager. I understand that, I understand why that's being done. I just would, I think it would be much clearer for residents, and I don't know that there's a lot of transparency here, if the question could be broken into two sections where you're talking about, there's a change to, you know, specific section, I wanna say 284.3, what is the role of the library board? And then 284.5, now the town manager is the person that will be overseeing the library director. So, you know, I'm just looking at the overall question. I'm kind of looking at being transparent with the residents so that they have an understanding when they read this question, what was the intent, you know, of the amendment to the charter.
Okay, anyone else have anything to say?
I just have a question to Val or anybody else on the first one. I think it's a good idea if clarity requires Suddington Public Library and Museum. One question I would have is, God forbid, what would happen if the museum didn't exist 20 years down the road from now? Would that be an issue for us if it said library and museum? Or if it said library and museum and, for example, the library, the museum didn't exist, future councils or something, I'm not saying that's gonna happen.
You can amend it.
But is it okay to, is it okay to still have that there, Alex?
Well, you can say the same thing, Paul, is right now we're saying, you're saying Suddington Public Library, but there's also a museum and the library board of directors oversees that and the town manager now will oversee the Suddington Library and Museum. So you can just flip that. So that's just for consistency purposes. In the charter language, that's why I had, I had asked for in the charter language that everything should be consistent, you know, board of directors of the public library and museum, the library and museum director. Because I think it just needs to be very clear for the residents that this encompasses the library and the museum. And now the role of the library board is what it is and the role of the town manager is what it is.
That's why I'd like to take each one of these individually, because I think that... That's why I'd like to take each one of these individually, because I think that, um, now there's a second one that you have, is there a third one also, or is that?
No, it, it's, those are the two, those are the two main ones.
I'd like to vote on each one individually, uh, uh, if that, if that's what you would like to present. And then, we can go from there. Is that, yeah?
Can I get the, can I get the question that I asked from the town attorney? Or the town manager? If, if the museum didn't exist, is that a problem?
It'd be the same thing if the library didn't exist, then you'd have, it'd still cover the Barnes Museum, but it wouldn't cover the library. It would, doesn't make a difference.
So it shouldn't be a risk for us to put it in there?
Not at all.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Is it a subset of the library?
Yeah.
Is it under the library?
Um, right now, it is, yes.
So would it be assumed?
The Barnes Trust says it has to be under the Board of Directors of the library. As the pro, programming, and we vetted that with the trust officer. Proposed language is in agreement, but the trust itself says that there has to be oversight from the Board of Directors.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there should be no issue with adding that language if you want.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I, I think, but I would like to get, I would like to, uh, have a motion for the first part that Val presented, uh, with the language. And then, we can talk more about, uh, if you wanna make a motion on the second part that you presented, Val, that would be fine. Would you like to make a motion for the change of the first part of what you said for clarification?
You mean the, the Southington Library and Museum?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Just, just for clarification, it's the second line
Yeah.
would say board of directors of the Southington Public Library and Museum, and then the last line would say and collective bargaining of the Southington Public Library and Museum operations.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the, on that, on this motion?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
And, and, and Madam Chair, just to clarify, that's three changes, Southington Public Library and Museum to be added to three spots. Is that everybody's understanding of what, what was voted on?
Yes.
And Museum.
I, I believe that is correct.
Three spots, three spots.
Three spots?
Three spots, yeah.
Yes, three spots. Okay. Val, did you wanna make a motion on the second part of your, your question, your, uh, offering?
Well, the second, the second part of it would be, I think, the town attorney had mentioned that he and the town clerk had structured the question, right? So I don't know if it would go back to you to prepare something that would be more in line with what the con, what the discussion was.
We are at a time delay on this one, though, because, um, your next meeting is until the 12th of September.
Yeah.
So, um, I would suggest that you make it, you do what you have to do tonight, because Kathy then has to get
September, September 8th is when the question has to be to the state for approval.
So we have to get to the state by the 8th, so if you could do what you need to do tonight, whatever you want to vote, if we could have the final vote tonight, Kathy can then can do her thing.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a comment.
She's trying to figure out what we're doing.
Okay.
So I would say the, um...
We currently stand with the, with that language as amended.
Yeah.
So I guess what I would say is I'd like to see it in two, um, I mean, I can't do it just this quickly, uh, you know, trying to, um, with, with all the language, but I guess I would like to see it in two parts that it would look at specifically section two eighty-four dash three, that the responsibility, that the Southington Public Library and musi, the Board of Directors of the Southington Public Library and Museum would be responsible for the activities, programming, materials, and usage policies of the Southington Public Library and Museum. So that would be section two eighty-four dash three. And then, that section two eighty-four dash five would be amended to reflect that the town manager may appoint and employ a library and museum director. And you can use the language from, um, from the exhibit, from the Charter Revision Commission. You know, who shall be responsible for overseeing the daily operation of the library and Barnes Museum. And then, if you wanna go further, Alex, to say that the town manager, town manager shall also be responsible for management of staffing, finances, building operations, and collective bargaining of the Southington Public Library and Museum operations. But I think it's important to put in there for section two eighty-four dash five that the town manager may employ the library and museum director, because that was the intent, that was the, a lot of the discussion of the charter revision.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Just, Val, I'm sorry, you gotta help me understand. How is that different than what's listed now?
It's, it's, it's spelling out, I, I think what it's doing is it's pointing residents in the direction that the big change was the library director position. That's it. You know, it's, the way it's written is it's showing the, um, it's showing the responsibility, the role of the Board of Directors and the role of the town manager. But when you really look at what, you know, so many of the discussions focused on the library director. Who, you know, that was the confusion.
Well, who the library director answers to?
Answers to, like who, and that's been confusion for a long time, right? So, so that seemed to be the, the issue.
So I guess my question is, not to ruin your train of thought, but what's different than what's there now? What changed?
We're not, we're not, well, we're not, we're not, we're not making it specific. So if a resident comes in and reads this question, would they have checked, they would have to like, go through the minutes of meetings and get some history to know, oh, they were, the, the big change is the library director is now reporting to
Directly reports to the town manager.
Directly reporting to the town manager. I mean, that's a big difference, right? You know, with many libraries, you have your library director report to, to their board.
Yeah.
And so
So, okay, I think we've
So that's what I'm trying to do is to get that
I see where you're going. So I think you've made the motion then, are you, did you make the motion?
No, I should have the table, I think we should have Madam Chair, I think that, I think the town, I'd like to make sure that the town attorney has the actual language written and can recite what, what Val said, because I'm, I'm a little
I'm confused too.
A little confused, so I just wanna make sure that we have it.
I, I only have written what was last voted on. I, if someone wants to literally call it out, I'll write it down as we go. I'm more than happy to do that.
Is there any issues making changes to those, Alex?
Right now, I have the, the and museum three times changed. If people wanna suggest, suggest, I need a specific change. I need to say add this here, remove this here, and I can do that right now.
So should we, should, I'm sorry, Val.
No, go ahead, I think
Um, 'cause I wanna make sure we get this right. If, should we, should we have Val re, uh, restate what she wants to do and maybe have, um, have you typed it, type it up? And then read it back to us, specifically, exactly what's being proposed here? I'm, I'm just concerned that none of, nobody has this formally documented, all the things that she said, so that we can vote on it.
I can do that. If she wants to write, if she wants to read it out, I will write it down and, and repeat it, if that's what you're looking for. But I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for.
Can I just make another comment? Part of my concern, I, I, I think this is part of where your concern is coming from. Just echoing some of the concerns that we've discussed throughout the process with the charter revision, in, in that we're removing authority from nine members and giving it solely to one person. So again, I, I mentioned this in the past, I think back to failed, um, charter revision issues that have come up in the past with the police and fire, and it was similar in nature, that it would put this under the control of town manager versus, versus a, or a board. That's, that's my concern, I think that's part of the concern
It's not the board that I'm concerned with, Chris, it's the state I'm concerned with. We need local control of the library.
I, I understand, but I'm just saying, my concern is that this would take away the authority of the library board over the, over the director and put it with the town manager.
Right, so, can I make a comment? Yeah, can I make a comment?
He actually defines.
Councilman Palmeri's point, that's, that's fine, to, to feel that way. But we're voting on the question this evening, and I read this question, that's totally fine, this is clear. And, and what Councilman Palmeri just said is that he would be a no vote on this question, which, that, that's, that's your opinion. But in terms of the question, I think it's very clear. And, and the, the, the real confusion has lied for years and years and years, and even the library director got up here and said that she is looking for clarity, and this is the clarity that she would, that she would want, is that, you know, who, who's responsible? And it says the town manager to be responsible for management of staffing. And the town manager's director, the library director, she's the manager of the staffing. So I don't, I'm not sure, I, I personally don't see any confusion with the way that it's written, with Councilwoman DePaolo's amendments. So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to vote on it as is, and then if you wanna take an opinion on the question, that's, that's what the voters will do in November, but
And Madam Chair, if I can add on to that, the library board had representation here. I know, so you're saying, Chris, that you're concerned that the library board is losing powers? I would offer that, number one, our charter doesn't really define what the powers are of the library board or the town manager. So number one, this is really defining it, because it's just not there. Nowhere in our current charter does it say what those duties are for each of those people. So number one, we're defining it, so that, that's a positive thing that we're clarifying. Number two, I think your disagreement is where the powers lie. The, the, the both, you know, the, your concern is for the board of directors, but we had the board of directors here telling us that they supported this. So they themselves, the, the, the head of the board of directors, speaking on behalf of them, said, this is a good thing. And I, and I heard it at the, I heard it at the, uh, the, the, the charter revision meetings as well.
What I'm saying is some of the concern, the concern we heard tonight, the concern that I think, you know, partly is what, what Val's raising, and the concern that I personally mentioned the last time, and heard, mentioned at the charter revision meetings that I attended, was that. So I'm just sharing my own personal belief, and, and I have to ultimately vote on this, so I'm not gonna be voting to support it for those reasons.
But you wouldn't support it even if we changed the language?
Right, because I think there is still confusion, which is also what was mentioned by the speaker.
So there's really no point in us even going any further. So
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
I'd like to stay, say a couple things about this. So again, when, when I read this question, um, and I'm gonna read it so that the audience could hear it as well. Um, the charter question is, shall the chapter two eighty-four of the Southington Town Charter be amended to permit the board of directors of the Southington Public Library to be responsible for the activities, programs, materials, and usage policies of the Southington Library, and the town manager to be responsible for the management of staffing, finances, building operations, collective bargaining of the Southington Public Library operations? Residents, again, when they read that, they're not gonna know what that means, they don't understand what our current operation is.
It's very clear what's going, is going forward.
Madam Chair, hang on, I, I have the floor. So, so, so again, when, when you're reading this, it just says, hey, do you, shall this be this way? It doesn't really give a clear way of how it is now, and how, again, the director, so I understand what Chris and Val are trying to say. So you guys are confused on what they were trying to say, now we have voters trying to go vote for this, and we can't even get this language right, that it's not as confusing. So, again, it's just gonna be doing a disservice to people that they're gonna be guessing, or maybe not even answering this question, because it doesn't state the way that it is now, so it's not like saying, hey, we're gonna move from this to this, it's just saying, shall we do this? And it doesn't really say what we currently are doing.
Madam Chair, I would, I would ask, I would also, I would, I would agree with Councilman Perry's assertion that it doesn't state anything. On, on my phone, I look at the Town Charter for the library, it fits in like, in the palm of my hand, there's nothing there. There's literally nothing, and, and if, if it helps, Jack, maybe what we could do is print a copy at the polling stations and put a few copies at the polling stations of the current charter. So people can see what the current charter is, you know, and they can see that it's pretty much blank. There's almost nothing in there, and there, there says nothing about the duties and responsibilities of the boards or the town manager. I would be happy if, Jack, if that would help, if we, if we put, because you're saying that people don't know the point of departure? I think we should put copies of that there so they can read it going in.
Yeah, and, and I'm fine with that, and I think, again, we would just say, hey, what the current structure is and how it is. And again, precedent is what we're currently doing. What's happening is we are, again, taking some authority from a board of directors as appointed by the council, and indirectly, we wanna have control of it.
I agree.
So what's happening here is we, we appoint people on the library board of directors, that, again, they're gonna do what's right, and instead, we're taking some of their powers away, and we're funneling it through Mark, which we control Mark. So, again, I just don't think this is part of a democracy, I like having other people to have the say, we shouldn't be controlling everything. And that, when we're appointing people to these subcommittees, we should be picking the right people for that, and we should entrust them. And we should not be micromanaging, that is it.
Madam Chair, there needs to be clarification, and, and the library director came up here and, and spoke, and, and many people, the, the confusion doesn't li, lie what the board of directors at the local level. Nobody knows whether the library director reports to the state, or the town, or the town, the, the town board of directors, or the town manager. There's all kinds of confusion, uh, Mr. Perry, so there needs to be clarity. And to, to your point of how the current structure is now, I wanna get that information as well. And library boards of today and the past have been looking for that, and there's, nobody's been able to provide an answer. So the main issue is not between local control and the town manager control, it's really between the state and the multiple aspects of local government. So I, I think that putting this to align with other town departments is totally, uh, I, I'll be voting at the polls in November as a yes, but let's focus on tonight, this is just the question of putting it before the voters. Let's not get caught up in our personal opinions.
Not the question to put it for, you've already, you already voted to put it front of the voters.
Right.
This is the actual wording.
The wording, the wording that's gonna go on the ballot.
Tommy, just remember, just remember, we're, we're not allowed to put anything but a question on there. So there, there is only a question that we can put on the, the charter revision, so we actually have to form this in the form of a question. We can't say, here's a book on the, on the ballot, here's all the details behind this, but we can put, you know, we can put some information at the polling stations so that people can review it before they go and vote. And we have to also remember, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't hire and fire and, and, and reprimand, uh, you know, the, the, the zoning board. The board, the, the Board of Finance doesn't hire and fire the board, the, the finance director. The other boards in, in our community don't, you know, the, the open space doesn't, uh, hire and fire the, the, the staff member on the open space. This is consistent with almost every other board, except the two safety boards. And those safety boards are, are there because of, they're in the, uh, model that they're in because of safety and the safety of the people in our community. So they have a different standard, which is not uncommon in, in many other communities, so this is very consistent, I think that this is
I forget where the motion is, I think we need to move the motion.
I won't make a motion.
Okay. Then I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion.
Just for clarity, the motion that's in front of you is the amended motion, which includes Val's language,
Correct.
which the town attorney has.
Correct.
That motion is in front of you, it's been seconded, and so it can be voted on anytime.
Has it been, where's the, who has the first and second for clarification?
It was just, we voted on that.
We already voted on that, that's already approved.
Right, but you need, you need, now, now you need, you
Now I'll make a motion.
Now you make a motion to approve.
To approve.
The amended?
Oh, Val, Val amended it?
Oh, the amendment, yes, the amendment.
And
I seconded the amendment. Now we need a motion to move it forward. I'll make the motion to move the motion, the, the question forward as listed with Val's
The amended motion.
And I'll second that.
And then, just for clarification, that we were adding the and museum
That's right.
To, to those three spots, two of them are in, uh, in, uh, the question of the charter revision, and one of them is outside the question, is that correct?
No, all three are.
All three.
Can you, can we just, just for, make sure we get it on the record, where is the three spots that we're adding, the, the
I'm going, well, Mr. Perry read it, I've read it the whole thing. Shall chapter two eighty-four of the Southington Town Charter be amended to permit the board of directors of the Southington Public Library and museum to be responsible for the activities, programming, materials, and usage policies of the Southington Public Library and Museum, and the town manager to be responsible for management of staffing, finances, building operations, and collective bargaining of the Southington Public Library and museum operations question mark?
That's it.
Thank you.
My motion. And I second it, and I second it, all right.
Okay, so Del Santo made the motion?
Thanks for the suggestions.
Let's take the roll.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
No.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeri?
No.
Perry?
No.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, of course. All right, very good. All right now, for our open space, item G?
Item F.
I'm sorry, item F.
Is it F or G?
It's G.
G, G.
Sorry, I closed my stuff. Item G, the 824 proposed open space for Burritt Street contract?
I'll make a motion to approve sending that to Planning and Zoning for 824.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, let's move on to appointments. And we have Cable Advisory Council two members, they are both Republican. Mike, do you have their names?
I do. We were asking to put Mr. Robert Tonan and Mr. Rusty Haig for those two positions. Yes.
Those are Chair, Chairwoman's. No, they're council members.
All right, so I make a motion to add Mr. Tonan and Mr. Haig to the Cable Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Second, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Yes, indeed. All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. It was a long meeting. Thank you so much for your input. There's cinnamon butter.